For, for the record, all members of council are present as are all members of staff, department heads. Do we have someone here this evening to do an invocation? All right, sir, if you please step up to the microphone, I'd like to ask everybody to please rise for the invocation and remain standing, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you at this moment. We want to thank you for this opportunity that you gave us to come together as a community. And I pray that your presence would be here, that every topic that is discussed would be done in a, in a good manner. And I pray God that your perfect will be done in each topic that is discussed. I pray that you would bless every council member and everybody who was present here this evening. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being done for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, Mr. Sanchez, could you bring the list of participants? Thank you, sir. All right, our first item of business is public comments, and we have a list of individuals who have signed up. And the first individual to sign up is Sharon Dolan.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Dolan, resident of Sunnyside, Washington. We, the citizens, have put our faith and trust in you as our city representatives. When an individual is elected to state or local government, it is your responsibility and state law requires every member of a governing body subject to OPMA laws to receive OPMA training. Training must be done ninety days after taking the oath of office or assuming duties. Also, a refresher course is required every four years. RCW forty-two point five six point one five zero, also chapter forty point one four, RCW for retention of records. RCW forty-two point three zero point two zero five. Training can also be done in person or internet-based training. Though it is council members' responsibility, city manager could facilitate and possibly coordinate training for themself and council so that the city remains in compliance. I wonder if the formal council relied too much on a former council member instead of proper training. If the state record is correct, current and updated, some council members may not be in compliance with the law. This opens us up for violations of OPMA, violations that can be very costly for local governments, both in terms of litigation and administrative cost. Records I could find with AWC. One council member has ten credits. The date of those credits is from two thousand thirteen. One council member has seventy-eight credits. The date of, well, the most current date is eight of twenty twenty-two. One council member has seven credits. The date is the same, eight of twenty twenty-two. One council member has zero credits. New council members show zero, but, show zero, but sites say it takes six to eight weeks to update if they have taken classes. Again, OPMA training must be done every four years to remain in compliance as a governing body. It is your responsibility to continue or begin training. We must be in compliance with state laws. As a matter of public record, if you have taken classes and received credits that are not listed with MRSC and AWC, due diligence requires that you update and remain current with your information and training. I would like my statement and the information I have with that of the AWC, the copies that I got online, I would like that submitted into tonight's meeting and as public record. And I have that right here. I have a copy for everyone, well, up there, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name on my list is Sandra Sossati.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Sossati, and I am a resident here of Sunnyside. And so just as I was passing by Sixth Street a couple of days ago, I seen some of the employees putting up Christmas lights on the trees. So I was just kind of wondering, you know, why Christmas tree or Christmas lights were being put up when we're not in Christmas season anymore? And I noticed that it's on the street that is on the Hapo, like Sixth Street, and, well, we don't have electricity on those poles either, right? So I was just wondering, like, why that was being put up during the time and also what's that going to cost us? Just because I know that on the budget, twenty-three thousand dollars are spent on Christmas lights this last year. So just, you know, wanting council members to see where our funds are going to and maybe focus a little bit more on some youth activities as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that, Ms. Alba?
Could we allow Raul Sanchez to comment, please?
Mr. Sanchez.
Yeah, thank you. So that is part of that Sixth Street project. That wasn't city employees. That is part of the construction that the company that came in to put up the Christmas lights. We are aware they're not putting them up just because it was Christmas. It was just part of that time that they needed to put them up. They still got to come back and fix it. But, and yes, there is no power there, but it's just part of the scope of the project is to mount them, put them up there. So that's why they were there. It's still part of that construction project.
Now, these Christmas lights, more or less permanent, they're going to stay up there.
They're going to stay permanent, yes, because that was the original, that was included in the project.
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Britton Moore.
Good evening, everybody. Britton Moore, Sunnyside. I'd just like to follow up with what the young lady just was talking about. It happened to be January sixteenth, a Tuesday, that those lights were being put up by Sierra Electrical. It was really cold out for those guys. From Decatur down to the highway, there is no electricity. There hasn't been for quite some time. So I went out and had a conversation with the guys and they weren't too happy about it, not to pick on Raul. But they said it was part of their contract that they had to fulfill to get these lights up. They said that the city denied taking the reams of lights and using them for next year. So they went ahead and put the lights up. I don't see how we can leave these lights on these trees. I have photos for you. It's just a photo of one picture of one tree. But they're all, they're all pretty much, they all pretty much look like that. Those trees are not going to do well with lights put on in that fashion. As a matter of fact, they said that our guys are going to have to come along and probably cut them down. So those lights will be unusable. So we have a serious issue with maybe non-communication or lack of contracts being adjusted. I don't know what to say. I was floored, but I'd like to hear more about this. And I'll do a records request on that contract, but I just feel like there was a lot of money, time lost on this specific job. And I'd like to know when we're going to get electricity. Our vans have been broken into four times in the last two years. And it's a total loss to us because there's no lighting on that street. And when they were working construction, we didn't have a lot of coverage with officers because there wasn't, it wasn't an area where people could drive down those streets, but the criminals were very active. So they'd break into our vans and it was a smash and grab. So I'd like to know when the electricity is going to be turned on. Thank you. And any comments on those trees I'd love to hear.
Thank you. And Mr. Sanchez, we'll give a report towards the end of agenda where it says items from department heads. And so, you know, perhaps he'll be able to cover that in just a little bit, and I'll give you some time to prepare that as well, sir. So. All right, the next name on my list is Monica Niemeyer.
You're very tall. Yes, sorry. Yes, my name is Monica Niemeyer. I live here in Sunnyside. And what I wanted to talk about was actually asked, was about how, how does an inter-local agreement work? I'm looking at the one from that Sunnyside had with the city of Grandview, and I, I'm, I'm just, I'm confused. So it's an agreement, but it states no amount of expenditure. It doesn't know the budget, and there's another budget amended. But yet, when you look in the agreement, there is quite a bit of detail. It does state, you know, what the charges, what we're going to charge Grandview and you know, what the officer will do. Yet, to my knowledge, we, the council doesn't even have that information. The public doesn't have that information. So I'm, I'm concerned how an agreement can be made with another municipality with information that the council and the public aren't even aware of. I, I don't know how that works. I truly don't. I don't know about an inter-local agreement. So I kind of put some notes together. And so the summary of this agreement states, the purpose is to share the cost of this program. And Dean did explain that an inter-local agreement is to basically share the load. But how much is that? How, how much is those cost? And if we don't know what those costs are, is the amount already in the agreement with the city of Grandview going to be enough? Do we create some exposure for ourselves? Do we create some additional exposure for the city of Grandview? You know, when, when speaking on the last meeting, when speaking about this, Elizabeth did state, the city has hired the former employee and purchased a vehicle. And that was really about as far as we've gotten with that. But I don't think it was. What about the cost to set up the animals behind the police department? What about the food for the animals? So how was any of this done if there wasn't a budget presented? Where were the funds initially pulled from? What impact did the movement of those funds where the account was pulled from have? And how, sorry, my bifocals are getting in the way. And how, how much was this initially? And how much has it cost till now? Till deciding to do this till now? And what is that total cost? How do we know what the equal share for Grandview should be? The amount states forty-two thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents. But how was that calculated without a budget? How, how do we have this knowledge without seeing it? This agreement, and also this agreement affects, reflects different dates that I find confusing. Section four, consideration, reflects an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-one. However, right below that, in section five, terms of agreement, it reflects a date of December first, twenty twenty-three. So when did the services actually start? And is the city going to be accurately compensated for those services? Because in the meeting last week, Elizabeth gives a different date. It was asked when this started, and she stated it started when they started providing, city started providing services, November first of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, your time has expired.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And apologize for interrupting you, and I think we can probably answer a lot of those questions under section six and items from department heads as well. That will give Ms. Alba a chance to answer your questions and consider those and also whatever staff.
I'm sorry, I, I think I could have looked up, and I didn't even see the timers. My apologies.
No, and that's fine, but we're not going to respond immediately, but let's give our department heads time to consider your questions.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, I have no other names on my list. And nobody is protesting that they want to speak, so moving on to the next item. On the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes. Approve the minutes of the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four special meeting and ceremony. Approve the minutes of the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. Payroll vouchers. Approve payroll vouchers numbered one-one-nine-four-three-eight through one-one-nine-four-four-six and wire transfers as listed for five hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents for the period ending January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Claim vouchers. Approve claim voucher numbers one-zero-eight-two-five-one through one-zero-eight-two-five-six and one-zero-eight-two-eight-nine through one-zero-eight-two-eight-nine through one-zero-eight-two-nine-zero. And wire transfers as listed for forty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents for the period ending on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Approve claim voucher numbers one-zero-eight-three-two-six through one-zero-eight-three-five-eight and wire transfers as listed for one hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents for the period ending on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Approve claim voucher numbers one-zero-eight-two-five-zero and one-zero-eight-two-five-seven through one-zero-eight-two-eight-eight and wire transfers as listed for sixty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents for the period ending January five, two thousand twenty-four. And approve claim voucher numbers one-zero-eight-two-nine-one through one-zero-eight-three-two-five and wire transfers as listed for three hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents for the period ending January twelve, two thousand twenty-four. Council members, is there any item that you wish to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? Mr. Beeler.
I either have to ask a question or remove all of B.
Okay, what would you prefer to ask the question or remove the?
Ask the question.
Go ahead and ask a question, sir.
First time I've seen it without the names on it. And if you could explain why the names aren't on it.
Madam City Manager, on the payroll vouchers without names?
That is my error, and I apologize for that. And I can probably pull up the one that has the names by the end of the meeting. That is, that is absolutely just an error on my part. I apologize.
I had that written down on, on my note to, to ask about as well, so.
Right, when I read that, I thought maybe the city had to start another policy and thought, okay, we're going to list all the employees by number, not my name, and so.
I apologize for that. And it's, and it's just a, a box I click when I pull that report to either show the names or hide the names. And I obviously failed to click that box, so I'll get that for you.
Well, if everybody's okay, it can go, because I, I use the old one and the new one. I could figure it out. It's just a lot more work. I wanted to make sure it wasn't going to continue this way.
So I concur, Mr. Beeler.
Actually, what we can do is we'll replace that on the city packet, so it's on the website. And then that way you can review it, you know, at a later time.
And that way the next, yeah.
That way, if we ever historically need to go back, or somebody wants to look at it, it'll be available. We can do that tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, that answers your question satisfactorily?
Question, thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions or items that council members would like to remove for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Ms. Fausto.
Yes, this is probably over to Ms. Horner. I had a question regarding a couple of these invoices, and I also emailed you about those. Sorry, I emailed them so late, but hopefully we can hold some discussion. If not, I will allow some time for you to respond to those. But that's our invoice, one oh eight two nine four, the AWC city membership. And then also YVCOG, which is one oh eight three two four. Both indicate that we have spent a YVCOG thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine for the YVCOG assessment. AWC city membership, thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen. So I really just wanted some more clarification of what we're getting with those memberships and how does the YVCOG assessment differentiate from the twenty thousand dollar agreement that we're going to be actually talking about soon?
Ms. Alba, I think you have the answer for that question.
Perfect. So AWC membership, like we had our citizens say, is very important for training. And we also have access to different resources on their website. So a lot of times one of our employees will need to have a question answered. You can go on there and they have all the different sections that any city would have. And they also have our insurance now through the non-represented, so we would have to stay a membership through that association. Yakima Valley Conference of Governments is YVCOG. And what they, what they basically do is they have an assessment that goes to all of the cities, and they offer specialized services that maybe we can't do. So the contract tonight is for them to actually do that work for planning. So when we first hired Trevor, we hadn't had a planner before. And so we actually contracted with them for planning services, and that's what tonight is. It's the technical assistance. And so basically, all of the cities in the valley pay into YVCOG to help with training again. And then other cities like Maptin uses them for doing their building permits because they can't hire a building person. They don't have enough money to do it. So there's just different things, technical assistance that they can help us with. And they, and it's, I mean, really, to be honest with you, they're very, very beneficial for a low cost.
Okay, so just to, for, going back to AWC, it's broken down into equal parts with the four hundred and eighty-nine and forty-four cents for city council, court, city manager. So all of those are allocations of, of money to cover trainings and so forth.
No, it doesn't cover the training. It's the membership in the group.
Just the membership, okay.
The membership in the group.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, does that answer your question satisfactorily?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up on that.
Mr. Galan.
Do you have a list of the trainings that the city employees have taken?
And they're not city employees. They're.
There's, there's trainings for city employees and there's trainings for elected officials. Lucia, I put you on the spot. Do you have a list of all of our trainings somewhere?
I believe when employees complete their trainings through AWC, they are provided a certificate, and that certificate is then placed in their personnel file. And that's for city employees only. Council members, I'm not a hundred percent sure how that training is tracked.
Can I answer that?
Ms. Hart, if you want to contribute.
So when we went to Zilla here a couple of weeks ago in December, and we took the open meeting training, you know, the open meeting, it's got a long name, and I'm sorry, my mouth, my mouth isn't working. You received a certificate with net included credits for you already to build towards your municipal leadership. And that's the classes that are offered through the AWC to us. But, and those, and there's a long list. If you go to the AW, I was trying to get into the AWC website. My password isn't working. You get a long list of different trainings to take. You get a long list of things that you can attend, like you can go to legislative days in Olympia and visit with the legislators there and talk to them about your concerns about different things that are coming up in the legislature, legislative department. And so, and there's, the AWC, and they give us one when we were there. You remember getting a book about the mayor's and council's handbook?
No, and, and I understand that we have.
And we have those trainings, and that is, that is, that's part of the membership.
I know, I know. City manager said that the city employees also.
Yes, and they, and I'm sorry, they do actually. Clerks, clerks and tracers and city managers as well, I think.
Yeah, I attended a healthy workplace summit last year when we were looking for changing insurance. And all of the different groups were represented there, and I could go talk to the representative and actually say, what, what are you offering? How, how much is it going to cost? And they worked with us to make that change for our insurance.
Oh, yeah, it makes sense that we have it. Just, I want to make sure that city employees are actually kind of taking advantage of it and using it.
Yeah, and, and I do believe we have city employees that have attended conferences. There's all kinds of things that, that have, they offer that we go to.
And, and as far as that goes, I also encourage each one of the council members to attend these workshops and different trainings, things on budgeting, things on what the auditor's office is looking for, updates and all kinds of excess taxes, property tax caps, all those kinds of things are offered through the. So as counselors, you know, when you talk about how many credits we have, we probably have more than that. I know that I have more than than I think you listed, because I've been going every year that I've been, been on council, every year I've gone.
Yeah, I've been getting the emails and I'm planning on attending as much as possible.
And that's good.
Does that help, sir?
Yes. Then there's another question on page twelve. Ms. Horner, can you help me with that? It's on the payroll liability funds. I've noticed that sometimes it shows a negative amount, and sometimes it shows a positive. Let's.
So the, the payroll liability account is actually, it gets rolled into the general fund. It's part of the general fund, but it's when we pay our employees and there are deductions that come out of their checks. And it's the money that we've already paid to the employees or benefits amounts that we've already expensed. But we, we, like for the IRS, we only, well, actually, we pay them every pay period, but like Ellen and I, we only pay them quarterly. So that money sits in there until it gets paid out.
Okay, so sometimes it's going to be negative and other times.
Right, and negative actually means there is money in there versus the opposite. So.
I have another item.
Okay, sir.
Thank you for providing me this. It's the check number one zero eight three three seven. For the inmate meals, how often do we look at these contracts? Because I'm, I'm looking at these, these meals and and they're, they're, they're eating pretty, pretty good. Some of these meals, you know, sixty dollars apiece. There's one, you know, seventy-five dollars apiece, you know, that, they're eating pretty good for, for having to be in jail. So are we looking at that from time to time?
I, I was going to let the chief answer this, but I think that the amounts that you're talking about are actually like boxes of multiple meals. That's not just one meal.
And how much would this cover? How many, how many weeks or months?
Go ahead, chief.
I would have to get that information. I don't have it readily available, but these are prepackaged meals bought from, I believe, a prison. And they're made there. It's the cheapest way we can go. We're, we're feeding these inmates for like two dollars a meal. Okay. On these prepackaged meals.
They don't want to make sure.
We're buying them by the pallet load and storing them across the street in the cold storage. So there's times where we're buying a bunch, and then there's times where we're not buying as many. It just depends on our stock.
Okay, that makes sense.
I have another question. So
Ms. Sanchez.
Check number ten eighty-two eighty-five. It's Wapato Municipal Court. It says bail posted at the amount of one thousand five hundred. And it says bail for J.M. Rosas. So how does that work? I just want more clarity. That way I'm not lost.
We, our, our court or our police department receives bail money on behalf of inmates here. But that bail money has to get sent to the court who has them arrested. So we house prisoners for, or inmates from all up and down the valley and other jurisdictions across the state also. So you'll see those bail checks that are, it's money that we've taken in here so that the prisoner can be released. And then we have to send to the correct court or jurisdiction.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right, further questions?
Yeah, I have another one.
Yes, your deputy mayor.
Sweeper repair. I have an invoice here that Ms. Horner provided, thirty-five thousand. It says fourteen thousand of labor, seventeen thousand of parts. It just doesn't say what they did to the, the sweeper. Is, is it something that our guys could be doing in-house or is it something that?
The two invoices actually are both related to the same thing. Those are upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. So the one you're referring to and also that other one for the digester.
Yeah, that's.
Those are both wastewater treatment plant maintenance, not upgrades. So it's basically maintenance that needs to be done every few years. And I will let Raul speak more on that because he knows actually how it works. But just in regards to the wages, it's not considered a public works project because it's not a new development. But because, so it doesn't go to bid. It's a professional service, you understand? So it's like we're paying somebody to come and do maintenance on what we already have. However, we still are required by law to pay prevailing wage. So that's why sometimes people will go out and they'll say, look at a quote or something and say, how come you guys have to pay this much for somebody to do this? I know my neighbor's business would do it for a lot less. We are required to pay prevailing wage. So some of them, it has a notate, I think one of those has it notated on the invoice that it's prevailing wage. But I'll let Raul actually talk about what they did.
Mr. Sanchez.
Okay, so yeah, all one equipment is the company, the sweeper, that, that is the nearest place rep for this piece of equipment. And the, the regular maintenance are, we do it in-house. But there are certain things that this sweeper has been having some issues over time, over years. So finally, it came to the point where our mechanic said, this is way too far. There's so much electrical in it. We, we, we recommend to just have it sent over there. They'll look at it. So they, they communicated back and forth. It was delivered there. This is in, in Eugene, I believe, Oregon, is where our, that rep is. So they went through that thing because there was a lot of little stuff that just constantly kept on happening with the sweeper. And that's, that was the repairs.
Just, it just seems pretty, I know we have to pay the prevailing wages, but it just seems pretty pricey for, you know, for maintenance, thirty-five thousand. Did we consider that when we purchased the equipment? You know, it's going to be pricey. Was it a new purchase when we purchased?
No, the, the sweeper itself is older. That's the thing. It's, and so again, this is something that we've talked about in, in our stormwater fund. It is a new fund that still isn't up there in funds. And in order to replace a sweeper would be a lot of money. So right now, that is the goal at some point. But for now, it is the sweeper that we have, and we do have to keep it going. And again, this was a, a big fix, and, and it was there for a, a while to get everything completely fixed on it. It wasn't just a, like a, a maintenance thing. It was, it was some major repairs on it. And that's the reason for that expense.
All right. And then the only question I have on the digester cleaning for fifty thousand dollars, how, how often is that needed?
That, it can depend on, depending on how much it fills up, but that typically, anywhere from five to eight years is, is, you do it. On this, we have two digesters. That was the work for one of it. And yeah, that's, that's up to bring it all down, clean it out. Because what it does is just all that solid's in there, it's taking up space, and it's not going to. bring it all down, clean it out. Cause what it does is just all that solids in there is taking up space and it's not going to work as properly as it should.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from council? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
All right, we've got a motion by councillor Hart, second by councillor Beeler to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I two vote aye. Motion carries. Active agenda. Active agenda, item A, schedule of fees and charges update. Consider approving a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges for two thousand twenty-four. Madam City Manager.
I'll have staff report, Ms. Horner.
Ms. Horner.
Thank you. This is originally, we were, we 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 presented to council a new plan for the rate structure of our stormwater. Our stormwater utility and council elected, this was at the end of, of twenty twenty-three. Council elected not to make a decision on that. They wanted to have this new elected body be able to consider that. So we had to change that rate amount on the fee schedule. We had changed it the other way. Now, since we changed this to a resolution, we can change it right now before it's ever billed. So it'll, it'll be billed at the the, the same way that it has been billed in the past. So, and then I believe at the study session coming up in February, H L A will be back to talk more about the stormwater utility and the water system plan, I think also. There was another couple of things we realized that we didn't get into the fee schedule the first time. So since it was coming to you, we just threw in their charges that we already collect for. One is for public records for the cost of redacting video and audio recordings. Those all have to go through a data anal analyst to make sure that nothing is released that is not able to be released. And so there is a cost for that that we added. We had, we charged that anyways based on the current cost of the actual labor to do it. But now instead of having them calculate that every time based on which employee did it, we just did an average of the wages to get that amount in there. The other one was something that Trevor put on, so I'll let him mention that one.
The other, the other one was a solicitor's permit. We do have solicitors licenses. And it's, we had, but we have been charging this, but it we didn't find an actual codified portion of the code. So we figured that we should probably be in there if we're going to be charging people for it, but it's for people who get the proper permits and licenses and background checks to do your door-to-door sales or, and things like that. So we're adding the, the solicitor's permit fee to our code. It's just a flat, flat rate.
All right. Thank you. Council members, questions or comments on this item?
Okay, I have a question.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
They're supposed to have a permit when they come to my door?
Yes, yes. So, yes, the city of Sunnyside, we require them to have a city of Sunnyside endorsement on their D O R license. And then they're supposed to have a background check and the solicitors, the solicitors permit from our office. So yes, they're supposed to have all of those things from our office.
What's the violation for them not having it?
The first one is fifty-two dollars. The second one is a hundred and fifty-six dollars and the third one is three hundred and twelve dollars.
Okay. So do we just call code enforcement?
Yeah, you can call us. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be happy to come out there and talk to them.
Further questions or comments?
I have a question, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Frausto.
So I understand that there's a resolution to amend the, or approve the amending to the schedule of fees. But I was actually doing some review and a couple of questions came up and I don't know if maybe manager or Ms. Horner can help me with this, but I was wondering how maybe I can get some information of the revenue that was generated from these fees, maybe from last year. And the reason why I ask is I'm going through these fees and I feel like the city should be acquiring a, quite a bit of money if not we can aspire to. And also taking a look at how well we did last year, maybe the years prior, what could also be a good indication of how well our code enforcement has been. Or maybe also, you know, do some review on how our court enforcement could improve. So I'm just wondering where I can get that information.
We can, actually all of the financials are available on the website, also through the state auditor's website, their fit tool will show you some of the separate revenues for different types of things. But I can get you like a copy of the, when we go through the budget process, you'll see all of that stuff also. But I can get you a copy of like last year's annual reports and the year before, which they're still actually doing the audit on the state auditor's offices here, doing the audit on that. So once those numbers are audited, we can get that for you. I mean, I can get you the unaudited version now. If you want, I can email it to you.
That would be great. Yeah, thank you.
I think it's available on the website, but I can send it right over.
Thank you.
And I, I can give you just a really brief, with the building department, we started cataloging everything and tracking everything in Open Gov last June. And since last June, I did last June through the end of, the end of twenty twenty-three, we had two hundred forty-nine records created and the city took in two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the building department. That's so we could, I can change it to all records. Hopefully I'll update here. And, and that would include some of the, the, the public works things that would be, I would have to go in further and separate it. But just a, just a brief overhead, since June of last year, including public works and some of the other records that we are other permits that we issue, it's eight hundred and forty-nine records created. Two hundred and eighty-two inspections done, six hundred and thirty-three permits issued and four hundred and thirty thousand, almost four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in permits, permit fees collected in that system. There might be some other things that are outstanding, but that's just the system at a, at an overhead.
Yeah, thank you for those numbers. Yeah. I mean, just looking at title six, I mean, under animals, and I know there was a public comment around our inter-local agreement, but I mean, just even enforcing this alone, I know we have a huge animal problem here in, in, in Sunnyside. So I mean, just looking at, you know, spay neutered per dog. I mean, we're collecting sixteen dollars. An altar thirty-four dollars, but I mean, taking a look at how we still have a huge problem. It's like, you know, there must be some discrepancies there and it's just, you may, we can be picking up a lot more money if we're actually doing some enforcement on some of these, actually many of these. I mean litter and weeds, parking zones was another one, mobile vendors. And but I mean, the list goes on, but I mean, we can definitely continue that discussion, but that's where my question was alluding to. I thank both of you for being responsive.
Other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I, I would just have to agree with councillor Frausto. You know, we see littering violations, even the yard sale signs are being left out in the roads and it doesn't look pretty. And a lot of people don't even know that they are violating a code because many times as residents, we're not sharing this information with our residents. So I think a key factor would be for us to just educate our residents and do each one of us play our own part in helping them out and telling them, you know, the importance of helping to make our community look beautiful because it's very important. And the more and more we continue to turn the, our eyes the other way, the more and more they see that they're getting away with it and there is no codes, no one is implementing these offenses, no one is picking up the money because of these violations. So at the end of the day, it's our community is not looking nice and we're not being collecting the money for it.
Other comments or questions?
I want to commend, Mayor, I would like to commend the staff for going through the process of collecting and amending the fees and charges, which haven't been done in quite a while, if I remember from my reading there. And I think bringing them all up to date and everyone knowing what they are. I think will make a lot, a lot easier for us when people ask us, well, what's the fine? You know, we can say, hey, it's right here on page whatever. So I, I really commend you for the work that you've done on that.
Yeah, it is. I would agree with my colleague. It is important that we keep up with things and keep things updated. And it sounds really simple on the surface, but all of our staff members are involved in a lot of things. And so for them to get to work on this project, it's been a big project and I, I, I think it's one that is past due. And so thank you for doing all the work on that. All right. If there are no more comments or questions on this item, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
A second.
All right, we've got a motion by councillor Hart, second by deputy mayor Galvan to approve a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges for two thousand twenty-four. Debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I two vote aye. Motion passes. Item B, two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan amendment opening. Consider approving a resolution opening the two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan amendment process. Madam City Manager.
I'll turn this over to staff for Trevor Martin.
Mr. Martin.
Good evening, city council. So what I have before you tonight is something that the city should be doing on a regular basis. And that is opening the amendment process for our, our city's comprehensive plan. As I kind of mentioned at our last meeting, we do, we will be having a comprehensive plan update relatively soon here within the next two years. But this is just the standard process where anybody from any, any property owner within the city of Sunnyside has the ability to submit an application to the city during this, the structured timeframe. So from now until the last, the last business day in April, and they can request a change to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan regulates the future land use designations in the city, which in turn regulates the zoning and which in turn regulates land use and, and development of the city. So tonight I'm just requesting that the city council open this process and allow for property owners within the city to, to submit applications for the next couple of months.
All right, council members, questions or comments?
What was the last day that they could submit?
It's the last business day of April.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Is there like an application or something that they fill out on?
Yes, there's an application on the city's website or they're available at city hall. Yes.
Ms. Hart.
And if I'm, for clarifications, that means that people who live maybe on the border of the comprehensive plan or people who are with in the comprehensive plan.
It's anybody who owns property in the city and wants to change their future, future land use designation.
So like from residential one to light industrial?
Yeah.
Et cetera?
So on and so forth. Yeah.
Okay.
And the, and the process is reviewed before the planning commission, probably starting sometime in June to kind of go through to dock at the, to dock at the applications and take them through additional processing to make sure that they're, they make sense.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Okay. So this is just to open the process of people who want to make some changes. This isn't to make any changes at this point. This is to open the process of making the application and giving citizens a chance to make these requests. So we're not acting on any of these kinds of requests at this time. It's got to go before the planning commission and all sorts of other steps before we even see any of this. So Mr. Beeler.
Is this something new? Cause I thought people could just request that at any time during the year. Or is this something we haven't been doing that we're supposed to do?
Yeah, that's the second option there. And so it is something that we should have been doing. I'm sorry. It is something that we should, we should be formally processing. There's, so there should be, we don't have to do it from this timeframe. I do like to start it at the beginning of the year. That way we could process it through the end of the year and there's yeah. So that's typically when I like, that's typically the schedule that I'm used to. But yes, every city that falls underneath thirty-six seventy A. They're, they're required to make, they're required to allow, they're required to ask their council to consider the comp plan amendment process. So yeah, we, the, the staff should be, should be approaching their city councils and requesting at some, at some point in the year, this, the council open, open that process for, through a, a structured timeline. We can do, the, the city, from my, my research, that looks like the city had been processing it as the applications came in. There could be some issues with that. I, I tend not to lean that way. I tend to, to want it to, through a, a structured schedule. It just makes it a little bit cleaner process. Yeah.
And I'm sure, Mr. Beeler, you've learned by now as well as I have that there are always things are, that are slipping by us unnoticed and that we need to address. And that's why we try to hire the best staff that we possibly can. And still things get brought to our attention. And so thank you, Mr. Martin, for bringing us up to speed on that. Further comments or questions on this item? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
To approve.
Second.
We had a motion by councillor Beeler, second by councillor Hart to approve a resolution opening the two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan amendment process. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I also vote aye. Motion carries. Item C, personnel policy updates. Consider approving a resolution accepting the updated personnel policy manual. Madam City Manager.
So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Navarro for staff report.
Ms. Navarro.
Good evening, Madam City Manager and Council. Today we have before you an updated personnel policy. And this is the personnel policy that applies to all city employees, nonrepresented and represented employees. And this just covers all of the stipulations and policies that they would have to follow as an employee of the city of Sunnyside. And Ms. Horner, if you have anything to add, feel free.
And just to give you a little background on this process, the personnel policy manual used to be housed within the Sunnyside municipal code. And in two thousand twenty-two, we requested that the council remove that from the code because it's easier to update it. This policy manual had not been updated since twenty twelve, no, two thousand eight, twenty twelve, something like that. And so it's been years and years, more than a decade since it was updated. And there are law changes that have to do with employment all the time. So we need to be able to update this document more easily. I would like to say that we got it perfectly updated in every way, but this has been a almost two-year project now and I still feel, feel that there are things in there that need to be updated, but we do the best we can as we get, as we get through them.
And a little background on why it was in the municipal code. So there was a city manager. I want to say in two thousand ten or eleven, they refused to create a personnel policy. And the city was actually sued over that. And then the council actually took action by putting it in the municipal code. We, that is very rare for a personnel policy to be in a code because basically if something changes, you're breaking the law. So if you don't follow what's in the code and then a state law changes, then you're breaking Sunnyside's law. So we really wanted to make sure that we were able to update sections of it and not have it be in the code where we are breaking the law either way.
Council, questions or comments?
Just a comment on that. It's, it's, it's one of those things where this is more convenient for the staff to be able to make those changes readily as opposed to have to go through the whole ordinance change. If, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's, that's, it's a heavy read. That was a kind of war and peace there for a while, but it is very, very comprehensive. And I got to say that there's some things in there is like, gosh, doesn't, I had, had no idea that there, those rights were, you know, figured out in that way. So good job. I mean, it's like you say, there may be things you still want to change, but from my point of view, it, it's pretty comprehensive. And I think that, and it's, it's flexible and it, so that's another advantage to having that.
All right. Further questions or comments?
It also helps employees to have a guidebook of what they can and can't do. So everybody's on the same page.
Exactly.
I have a question.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes.
You beat me.
So I know when you, we repeal an ordinance, you go on there and, and you click on it and you know where it says repealed. And all it says is, you know, it's, it's current and it was replaced by ordinance so and so. But can we make it easier to find? You know, can, can we make it a lot easier for somebody to find the actual, you know, policy instead of having to go back through the minutes and, and the council meetings?
Is it not available on the website?
The, this policy, once it's approved, because it hadn't been officially changed, will be listed on the H R website, on the H R link along with the, you'll see a link for labor relations contracts. So those are all of the other contracts for all of the union groups. There will be another one for personnel policies and this will be available there.
Well, I'm saying for particular, you know, particular ones that are not on there, you have to go and do a bunch of research on the, on the website. It's sometimes it just has the, the wording of the ordinance, you know, that was passed, not the actual policy, not the actual procedure.
Ms. Horner.
I think you're referring to every time we, we take something out of. I think you're referring to every time we, we take something out of the whole municipal code, not just this particular thing. Okay. I don't know. We would have to, that's a more of a Jackie question actually about how code publishing handles our, um, code.
If it was adopted by code, then all of our ordinances are available online on the clerk's page, public records. The ordinances and resolutions, if you know that if the number is listed, you can look for the ordinance there. Or you can always email me and I can send you a copy.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to the ordinance, um, purchasing and procurement, you know, you click on the.
If I may interrupt, sir, we're, we are talking about the personnel policy at this point. So it's probably not a good idea to, to get into different ordinances and that sort of thing. It's not a discussion on ordinances. We can certainly talk about that um, at a different time, um, in the agenda, but it's not.
It's just.
This question. The personnel policy is not on the website.
The, the other, the other stuff, I mean, if we're gonna change it, let's make it easier for the public to, to see.
Correct. But we need to stay on topic on this point. Otherwise we start running down rabbit holes and it gets to be a very long convoluted meeting and we never quite get to the point. I, we've been through that before and uh, trying to prevent that. But yes, we can absolutely talk about this. Your questions are very pertinent. So I don't want you to think that I'm trying to shut you down, but I, we have to stay on the topic at hand here. Ms. Fraustah, you had a question?
I did. Yeah. Um, so uh, this is probably a question for, for HR. Um, just given, you know, our weather and climate weather, right? Um, uh, and uh, you know, the closing of City Hall. Um, I was, I was going through, I was, I was doing some review.
Ms. Fraustah, may I interrupt you? Um, Ms. Hart has a question and I think it's a valid one. How does this relate to the Personnel Policy Manual?
Uh, because I was getting to a remote work on the personnel policy.
Okay, you may continue. Let's just make sure we stay on topic.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and uh, so getting to remote work, which is on topic. Um, I, do we have, I was looking through the policy itself and it seems a little vague. Um, but just, um, since, you know, we've been closing down City Hall, I, I'm, I'm wondering, do, is staff required to have like a telework policy agreement or a remote, um, uh, agreement signed? I know that it's uh, on a case-by-case basis. Um, but I, I say this to um, also be informing the public, right? When there's a closing of City Hall, if we're switching over to remote, who's still working, who's not? Um, who, you know, who are we suspending operations for? Um, so it seemed a little vague and I just actually wanted some more clarification on that specific policy.
Um, in relation to the Personnel Policy Manual, the reason it's so vague is because there's so many varied jobs. Um, and it would take quite a while, I think, to outline sort of the parameters for each type of job um, and how a tele, how a, a remote working agreement would work. Um, so for this, for the, this subject, um, if council wanted us to look at a, at putting a more robust policy in the Personnel Policy Manual, we could look at doing that. Um, we just haven't because, in fact, we didn't have anything in the policy at all prior to this iteration. It wasn't even in there. Um, that was one of the things when COVID happened. That all of a sudden, there's standalone policies for, for remote work now.
Right, right, right. And I know it's pretty common within organizations. And so I just, you know, wanted to make sure if, if, if we can revisit this part, I think it would be really important. I think it's really important also for the public again to know, um, you know, if things like this happen in the future, um, who are we still able to get a hold of? And you know, who's actually not working, you know, due to their job classification, especially if they're union, right?
Um, as I said, we didn't get everything right in here anyways. So this, this policy will probably be in a constant sort of state of updating that we'll bring back to you on a fairly regular basis. So we will definitely put that, um, on our list of things to look at in, in updating this policy. Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Other questions or comments from council?
Will all changes have to come back before council?
Since it's passed by resolution, if you read in the resolution, um, there are changes that can be, like if it's something by federal or state law, um, we can make those changes without having to bring it back to council. But the resolution and that first portion of the Personnel Policy Manual talks about the changes that can be made just administratively on the HR side. Anything having to do with, um, like how salaries are structured or anything, that will always come to council. Anything having, that will affect uh, the way in which we pay somebody or what types of things may be incentives or anything like that, um, that will always come to council or it's, it's in a collective bargaining agreement. So that has to come to council as well.
Well, if, if it's something coming from state or federal, how would the council know about it if the change is made? Is there something tied in there for you to let council know?
There, there is not. I can add that to our list as well. Um, there are constant changes. So I don't know, uh, I don't think bringing it back to you guys would be the best way because we would have it here every month. But yeah, um, we might be able to put something in place where we can, well, or, or we're, you know how, um, we do notifications when somebody requests an RFP? There might be something in our website where when we make changes to that, it'll automatically send an email out to you guys. Um, because we can, I think we might be able to do that.
Yeah, I think some council members would certainly appreciate that. So further questions or comments?
I do. I have, I have a question that ties into one point thirty-one. So I remember at City Hall once, uh, city manager discussed about the flexibility of the employees bringing in their children. And one point thirty-one, letter H, it says employees are expected to report to work without being accompanied by their children or family members. Employees must take time off from their work subject to city of Sunnyside leave policies. Should they need to, should they need to care for children or other family members? So I just had a question if that's gonna change, because I know it's, if there is flexibility, that's great, but then that should probably change.
Where is that on?
I, I can let the city manager speak to her personal policy that she's put in place, but I, I agree with you. This is a portion that didn't have anything to do with law that we just didn't get to as far as changing. Um, but the city manager does allow people to bring, uh, kids if school gets released early or whatever. And, um, she's, she is very flexible with that. And so we do need to update that language.
And I don't even oppose to it. I'm just saying I don't, the confusion in it, you know, H says employees are expected to report to work without any children or family members.
And honestly, I didn't catch that either.
Okay.
Because it is my, um, opinion that there are times in our lives when we can't find childcare and you still have a job to do. Um, today, good example, payroll clerk had to have payroll done today. And so she brought her daughter in after because she didn't have childcare for her. So as long as they can behave and, and, you know, not run amok is what I usually call it. Um, they're welcome to come in with their parents if, you know.
No, for sure.
Get work done.
For sure. And I get it and I'm all for it. You know, life happens. There's sometimes emergencies, but maybe that should just be modified.
Yep. We'll get that one on the list.
Further questions or comments?
Was this ever discussed in a workshop?
No.
No.
Staff frequently takes the initiative to modify policies or, or other things and then brings it to council for consideration. Um, it doesn't always have to come before council in a workshop because the modifications themselves are not always the responsibility of council. When it deals with finances, we do have to talk about it. It is, um, council's prerogative to approve. In fact, council's role is to approve budgets and, and budget changes. But some of these policy things can be handled by staff and so they do not need to come and have us contribute to all of that ideas. It really slows the process down for one thing, and it's really not part of the purview of council.
Well, season safety and budget.
I do want to say that, um, Ms. Navarro gave me a complete copy of the Personnel Policy back, oh, last fall, either it was September or October, and I read that from cover to cover. And it is a very in-depth document. Um, it has been worked on and worked on and worked on some more. There have been changes in it even since last fall where they've continued to update it. And, um, as has been mentioned, I've worked on personnel policy documents in other settings before. Um, you guys are doing a good job. As Ms. Warner has said, um, it will constantly need updates and, and changes. Some of it due to federal or state requirements, some of it due to changing realities, uh, such as Ms. Vasquez brought up just a minute ago. Um, yeah, sometimes we don't have a place to go with our kids. And so it's sometimes the manager's prerogative to say, you know what? You're human. We're all human. Sometimes things happen. And so we're going to make some, make some changes here. And so they've done a good job. This is a lot of work, uh, a personnel policy. I'm very thankful that it was in place when I needed it. And it answered the questions I needed to have answered. And so I think that everybody should have access. I like it as a standalone document. Um, I do believe as Deputy Mayor said, that it needs to be easy to find on the city website so that as council members, if we need to see it or city employees need to see it, whether they get a, a hard copy of it or need access to it on the website, that they can get that real quick and easy. And any member of the public who wants to know what our personnel policy is, they need to be able to have access to it immediately as well. But it is a comprehensive document and I once again read it from cover to cover. And as Ms. Hart said, it was a little bit dry in places, but uh, we got through it. All right. Are there any further comments or questions on this item? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Ripley, to approve a resolution accepting the updated Personnel Policy Manual. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye. Motion carries. Item D, Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, YVCOG Technical Assistance Contract. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a technical assistance contract with Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, YVCOG. Madam City Manager.
And I will turn this over to Mr. Martin for staff report.
Mr. Martin.
Oh, good evening once again. Um, so tonight I have before you is a technical assistance contract. And I believe council member Foster, you, you kind of brought up the difference between our membership and our contract. So I'll just kind of get into our membership a little bit. So the YVCOG membership, um, like the city manager referenced, uh, um, I believe all, all cities within the, the Yak, the Yakima area, area are, um, a party to that. So the, the, the YVCOG offers a variety of services from, um, boots in the ground, homeless outreach to point and time counts to, they're also our MPO and our TPO for our, the metro, metropolitan, um, planning organization and transportation planning organization. So they do a lot of traffic studies, a lot of, a lot of really heavy technical assistance for, for cities that don't necessarily have the staff to do it. And they also, they also, um, work a, a lot with other, other municipalities that maybe have some staff, but they also have access to other resources that we don't necessarily have access to. So, um, I like a, a good, a good thing would be the, the crime lab. So the, the crime lab that just opened up, uh, we're, we're, because our membership helps pay for part of our partnership. Um, we, they've allowed us to use the, the crime lab and Zilla. And I don't know if you've, if you're familiar with the facility, but if you're not, you really should look at it and some of the, the work that they've been doing. Um, what I have before you tonight is a technical assistance with the, and this is more with the MPO, uh, TPO portion of it. So the, the planning specific and transportation specific. So, um, we do have an engineer on, in-house with HLA and they can do some of this work for us. But, um, YVCOG has a full-time, um, transportation planner. Uh, his name is Alan and he has access to software that can generate, um, trip data. And it can do pretty, pretty born, more in-depth studies that we can't necessarily do. And so sometimes we'll contact them to do this work on the fly. Um, they'll also work with us to do, um, some, some, um, housing, housing information, housing stats, because they're working so closely with our, our legislatures, legislators. Um, and other organizations, they kind of have a figure, finger on the pulse of what other cities have been seeing. Other cities around us have been seeing. They do work for Granger. They do work for Grandview. Uh, they do the planning work for those two cities. So, so, um, once in, every once in a while, I will contact, work with them if I have questions or if I need some, some assistance on something, just to kind of quote, like cross, crossanalyze um, some of the information that I've been looking at. This is, this is just to make sure that we can cover those expenses because they do, they do charge us an hourly rate and they like to have a technical assistance, um, contract in place. Um, last year for Planning Commission, we brought them down and they gave us a, a small present, short presentation on, um, some Open Public Meetings Act and some, some planning stuff. Um, happy to bring them in if we ever want to do a study session with them. They can kind of talk about what they do as far as, as traffic and planning goes, um, throughout.
That would be great.
So that, that's what this is. Um, this is budgeted. This is, this would come out of, uh, of my, I already, I already looked it up for you. It's part of my, my bars code. It's, which has been approved, or which was, um, the council approved for five fifty-eight, sixty forty-one. They would come out of that, that bars code. So, um, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer it for you. Questions or comments from council?
Just had a one question.
Ms. Fraustah.
Uh, how much did we, um, did we budget? Uh, well, I know it's the twenty thousand, um, but how much did we, did we pay for any of the projects that came up last year?
Um, last year it was pretty light because I kind of, I've been taking a lot more of it. I think last year we had our, our technical assistance contract was fifty thousand and I don't even think we came close to touching it with them. So this year I pulled it back quite a bit because now there's me and, and the staff planner. So I, um, I think we'll probably be using them just for really light assistance, um, just if we want numbers or anything like that. So. Yeah. Um, I can't imagine it'd be too much. Sorry.
Other questions?
Um, the, uh, you said that it was, it's within your budget to have that amount of money, correct?
Yeah.
So you sort of pre-planned for this.
Yeah, it's, it's part of it. Yeah. So this is the same account that we would pay for any sort of like hearing examiner, any sort of like, uh, any, yeah, hearing examiner for any sort of land use thing. Um, we would pay for any sort of like, Open Gov has a maintenance, uh, as a, as a server maintenance agreement with us. We perfect, pay for their professional services out of this. Any YVCOG services. Yeah, there's a, there's a portion of the budget that comes out for those services.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Beeler?
How many years have we been using the, uh, technical assistance contract?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
But it's been a while.
It's been a while. Yeah. And we used them more, I think they, because I think after, uh, Mr. Ailing left, I think we went more with them because I think my, Mr. Shuttleworth came from the YVCOG. So I think he, he used them a little bit more. And then when he retired, we, the city used, I think for at least the last two or three years, had been using the YVCOG.
We've had a long run with them.
Yeah, yeah.
The technical assessment has been paid every year, um, since the current software goes back, which is till twenty thirteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
I second.
Okay, so we had, we had two people give the motion. I'm gonna give it to Mr. Beeler at this time and the second was, uh, Karen, okay. All right, so we've got a motion by Councilor Beeler, second by Councilor Vasquez, to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a technical assistance contract with Yakima Valley Council of Governments. Debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye. Motion passes. All right. Item five, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. Deputy Mayor and I met shortly after our last meeting and went down the list of council standing subcommittees and came up with some ideas. Not everybody's gonna get what they want. The idea is to change your uh, because your membership on a standing subcommittee every year so that you get a well-rounded view of what is going on in the city of Sunnyside, what our staff is up to and, um, become more and more knowledgeable. And that is a lot easier to do if you're on different committees. And so some things have changed around. Um, so we're gonna start out with the Subcommittee on Public Safety. And I'm going to just read down the names for each committee and, um, you should have a blank page in front of you that, uh, you got today, right?
I do.
And you can fill your, you can fill your name in there. It's, uh, it's on my agenda, but it doesn't mean everybody got the same thing. So, and if you have any objections, bring them up right now. And then what, what will happen is the clerk will send out a nice, clean copy via email to all of you. And you can either save that apart or keep that on your computer or print it out and keep it in a file, however you keep your records. And you'll know what committees you are on. And so working together, instead of me trying to do this all by myself, I do very much appreciate the help of the Deputy Mayor on that one. Um, his presence and suggestions and comments made it go much faster than it would have if I had to struggle through this all by myself. So thank you for being willing to meet and do all of that, sir. All right. Subcommittee on Public Safety. Um, put myself on that, Councilor Beeler and the Deputy Mayor. And you will be on more than one committee. Subcommittee on Finance and Administrative Services. Deputy Mayor, Councilor Ripley and Councilor Vasquez. Subcommittee on Public Works. Councilor Frausto, Councilor Ripley and Councilor Hart.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
Subcommittee on Public Works.
And who, I heard.
That was Ms. Frausto, Ms. Ripley and, and yourself. Subcommittee on Community Development. This would be Ms. Vasquez, Ms. Frausto and Ms. Hart. Subcommittee on Rules. This one we'd already announced. It would be myself, the Deputy Mayor and Ms. Hart. Subcommittee on Rules. This one we'd already announced. It would be myself, the deputy mayor, and Ms. Hart. All right, and I'm going to skip over the lodging tax for just a second. Arts Commission, I'd like to ask Ms. Ripley if you would serve on that. Okay. Parks and Recreation, I'd like to ask Ms. Frausto if you'd be willing to serve on that.
Be glad to.
All right. Sunnyside United Unidos, I would like to ask if Ms. Vasquez would be willing to serve there?
Yes, that's great.
I served on that one for a number of years, and I really enjoyed serving on that. My schedule unfortunately doesn't allow me to do it anymore. Driving Rural Yakima Valley Economy, or Drive. Mr. Beeler, I would like to ask you if you'd be willing to serve on that.
Sir.
Thank you. And then the Countywide Planning and Policy Committee. Asking Ms. Frausto if you'd be willing to serve on that.
I'd be glad to, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And that leaves the and see, oh, yeah, I can go down there, the Community and Economic Development Committee, Yakima Valley Solid Waste, Airport Advisory, and Lodging Tax. I know that there's a little bit of competition for the LTAC Committee and Econ Development Committee, because both the deputy mayor and Ms. Hart would like to serve on each of those. And I figured between the two of you, you can decide which way you're going to split that.
I'd like to take LTAC.
I would like to take LTAC, and the reason, and I do have an absolutely good reason for it. We've been working on trying to change the policy of how LTAC works as far as how we accept. It was a process we started when I was on council last, this last time. And I'd like to continue to work on that particular committee, so I can get it, so we can get it finished. And it's we we've been, we're, it kind of lost a year in the transition here, but I I would like to get back on to that. That's my reasoning.
I'd like to be on there. I mean, I've been showing up to the LTAC meetings, you know, even during the campaign, and I got pretty familiar with it.
Okay, I'm going to ask the two of you to have a discussion amongst you and decide. One of you will be on the Community and Economic Development Committee, and the other one will be on the LTAC.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we not allowed to bring this to a vote?
We can. However, I think it, we have not done it before. Normally, this is a mayor's appointment. And I am asking that the two of them come to a decision between the two of them. You can meet after the meeting and discuss that instead of in the meeting itself, if you would be willing to discuss that. I do ask that you, I know you're both kind of passionate about at least one of these, and I ask that you really work hard at keeping it civil. You know, they're both important and
The circumstances, as as Deputy Mayor said, you know, he's he's been going to the meeting, so I appreciate that. It is a, it is really more than just giving out money. It's it's trying to figure out which things benefit and enrich the community. And since you've kind of got a hand for that, I would be as happy to take the Community Economic Development Commission if you wanted to do the LTAC.
Yeah.
Is that all right with you, Mayor?
That is all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I actually? I'm also interested in being part of Economic and Development Commission.
I have, we Deputy Mayor and I left both the Community Economic Development and LTAC, just because I knew that both of them wanted that position. I have you on Sunnyside United, and we have others, other positions open. So I'm wondering if you would be willing to serve either on Airport Advisory Board or Solid Waste Advisory Group.
I wouldn't be. The only reason why I am interested in Economic and Development is because I've been working with businesses for about six years, and I'm very passionate to help out small businesses and our business owners here in Sunnyside. So I have experience, and I would really like to be a part of it.
And I fully understand that, Ms. Vasquez. And there's a very good chance that I could point you to that next year. Because I, yes, your position will change from time to time. And so if if that would, if you wouldn't mind, Airport Advisory Board or Solid Waste is both very important. Yet Solid Waste isn't a huge commitment, and it would kind of be between you and me on these two, which ones, which one we would take. So between the two that are open, which one would you prefer?
I may throw out there that we are going to be doing some airport work coming up here pretty soon. And HLA is asking, has been asking me and Raul for some some input. So the ports are also going to be a part of that. So it'd be kind of, kind of interesting to do some airport work coming up.
The FAA.
And the FAA, yeah, it's it's, it'll be pretty fun.
Okay, yeah, I'll do the airport.
Would you do the airport? Thank you.
I'll still be showing up to every development meeting, though, and I will still be putting in my suggestions, so I'll be there.
And that and that brings up a point here in a second. I'm going to ask the city manager to comment on a couple of things. So I will be on the Yakima County Solid Waste Advisory Group. I have been on that before, and I'm fine with that. So we can do that. So that takes care of the advisory commissions and boards. And Madam City Manager, if you would like to make a couple of comments about our advisory committees and boards, and then the city manager and the staff liaisons as well, if you'd like to comment on those.
So first, I'd like to say thank you for your work in these subcommittees, because it is an extra commitment to taking on, you know, kind of the meat and potatoes of what we have. But I do want to remind you, if you visit a boards and commission and you're not on that commission, you're not allowed to participate. It's it's not a time for public comment. It's not a time for you to participate. The participation needs to be by the committee itself. So it needs to be the counselor or council person that is put on that. That's the person that needs to be participating with the group that's appointed to that. So you're more than welcome to come and listen. And then afterwards, go to that council person and say, here's the suggestions I have on what I heard. So it's not a time of kind of interaction, is what I would say. Because you have to be very careful to tell the person that is on council, be the one that is listening to the advisory committee, and then bringing that back to council as a whole to to basically report on. So just want to remind everybody that that's kind of how the subcommittees work. And then also, there is a council staff liaison. And I've given you a list of all the staff titles. And if you're not sure who that is, just shoot me an email, and I'll tell you who that is. Now, what the staff's job is, is to work with the whoever is elected chair to that group. Basically, work with them on building the agenda. So we present the agenda for them and put it on on letterhead and, you know, do the work in the office for that. But it is really the chair and that group's agenda. And the staff is just there to answer questions and then listen to anything that you that the group is saying, you know, let's say there's an idea to put in new playground equipment. Well, that that commission would then actually work on designs that are brought forward from the staff. So we may bring three different designs that say, okay, this this one has this advantage, this one has this advantage, and this one has this advantage. But it's actually the committee that would get to make the decision or final decision on the playground equipment. So that's kind of an example of the work you would do. Same thing if we had a policy that we wanted to bring forward. Let's say it it applied to the police department. We would go to the Public Safety Committee, and we'd say, this is what we want to work on. Here's, you know, some ideas for it, and then that committee would work through it and then bring it back to council as a whole. So I really want, encourage you to step up and be the chair of these groups, since they're they're pretty amazing, and they do the hard work, and, you know, staff is there to listen. So.
I hear you. However, I I would just like to explain, I have been going to the Development and Economic Meetings, and this last, this month, or no, last month, I showed up, and we, it didn't even meet quorum, and, you know, Hart was even connected. And I was just bummed out, but I was able to maybe make some suggestions. And I was just saying suggestions from a resident's point of view.
Agreed, agreed. But but we have to be very careful.
No, for sure.
In there.
Okay.
And you can always reach out to staff. I mean, as a council person, we are here. And especially me, I'm here to serve as your liaison, and I'm the one that you can just say, hey, Elizabeth, I need this information, I need this, I need this. Sometimes I can fulfill it. I know how to get it. Sometimes I have to refer to staff, because I don't know the answers to all the questions. Like, I didn't know what the garbage schedule was this week, and I had someone call and ask. And so I said, well, let me get the utility billing cleared, because I have no idea. So just little things that, you know, will work with you.
Thank you.
And on the question of quorum, I know that's come up before, where sometimes our committees meet, and there's just not enough people there to be able to to hold the meeting. We need to remember, too, that we are working with volunteers in the city, and their compensation for for their service to the city is an email address. And sometimes a really big target on their back is people complain. And so they're they're busy. And if a committee hasn't been meeting regularly for a while, and all of a sudden we call a meeting, sometimes people haven't checked their emails, sometimes people are on vacation, they're unable to be there. And so we're dealing with with a group of volunteers, and and there's a somewhat different set of circumstances. With council, if you've missed three times in a row without an excuse or anything like that, we're going to come talk to you and ask what's going on. And, you know, if you haven't called in and asked for an excuse absence before your absence, well, then we're going to say you need to, you need to do this, or maybe a change of of activities. But with a group of volunteers, we're going to deal with their scheduling conflicts sometimes. Perhaps a member of the committee has a work schedule change, and they're unable to be there. Whatever the case may be, it can be frustrating sometimes. And sometimes the commission members are frustrated and don't feel like participating participating anymore for one reason or another. And so there's a lot of different elements that we're dealing with. And so, yeah, a lack of quorum can be disappointing at best. And if it happens regularly, then then we need to talk to the members of that commission, which is the job of the mayor and the deputy mayor to to reach out to those individuals and find out what's going on. So and sometimes the staff liaison does that for us. Usually, they they shouldn't be asked to do that, but sometimes they're, you know, they're go-getters, and they go after it for us. But I don't typically ask the staff liaison to do that. Another thing to keep in mind, council members, is you'll notice that there are some commissions in the city that do not have a council representative, like Planning Commission. It is recommended that we don't go to those meetings. If there are heavy items that are discussed at the Planning Commission that later come before council and councils expect to vote on, you are required to recuse yourself. And if the Planning Commission members know that you were there for that question, and you are here and not recusing yourself, they'll have the right to stand up and say, you were there. And if it's a public hearing, they're going to perhaps object to your presence at the public hearing or that sort of thing. So please be mindful of that. Now, we have had council members who didn't know before, and council members who did, and they went anyway, and then did do the responsible thing and recuse themselves from the vote. But be aware of those things, those, that that exists for a reason. There's a purpose why council members are not on the Planning Commission. Planning Commission's got some big things to talk about, and they need to do that without interference from us. All right.
Just a question. Is that the same with the civil service?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, civil service. We are not allowed to participate in discussions about our salary.
Oh, right.
Those types of things. We can't, we can't be members, parties to that. Actually, no, that would that would be the Salary Committee, and that's
Yeah, that's a different.
That's a different one. Sorry about that. But, yeah. We are, there are certain things that we need to stay away from. It just compromises our position, so we don't want to do that. No, I was thinking salary, and it's not. That's wholly different than civil service. All right. So and then also, council members, under the section item B there, where it says other reports, announcements, and or questions by council, that's where you give your report on your committee meetings and subcommittee meetings and all that sort of stuff. So that's where you have your notes prepared. I give everybody an opportunity to speak, and that's where that comes up along with anything else that you need to bring up. All right. And that's where we are now. Item B, other reports, announcements, and or questions by council, and I'm going to start with Mr. Beeler.
I have nothing to report.
Yeah, we really haven't met much yet this year, have we? All right, Ms. Vasquez.
Yes, I would like to just share that today I was able to go to City Hall, me, myself with Deputy Mayor Galvan. We were able to go and speak to Jameson Horner and our city manager. And we just had some questions, and a lot of the questions were, they they made sense, however, some of them have not. So I know that we'll still be working to have more transparency and clarity, so there's a lot more going on, and we're, I'm just excited to be working. And I'm excited for the conversation we had today. And that would be it for today.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Ripley?
Yes, I was looking through the ARPA fund. And there was a couple of things in there that I I just wanted to know exactly what they are for. The utility bill assistance. What is that?
So we had several months where it was suspended to collect the utilities, so a lot of people got behind. And as part of that act, we were able to basically pay ourselves back using that money.
During COVID, if you'll remember, that we gave assistance to citizens of Sunnyside who maybe were unemployed as a result of COVID, were unable to pay their utilities. It was not our desire, nor the state's desire, that anybody lose their water and water services, that sort of stuff, that that be shut off as a result of hardship because of COVID. And so the city did not force people to pay if they were unable to do that, and people were months behind. Those those bills were still going to be due. It's just during those times that they didn't have to pay right away. So at the end of that period of time, somebody owes six months' worth of utility bills. That becomes a bit of a hardship. We were able to use ARPA funds to pay their bills, to pay ourselves back, so that they didn't have to face that hardship.
And there was a lengthy application process that they went through and a review. So they had to prove that they had that revenue loss.
Some of those bills were quite high.
Yeah, some of the bills were.
Okay, and another one was the Nova Time and Attendance. What exactly is that?
Time clocks.
Do they have to be paid yearly?
There will be some maintenance with that yearly, yes. But it's not, that's the initial purchase. Ms. Horner?
The internal, it has the thermometer to scan, so this was one of those purchases that was decided during COVID in order for people to have their temperature scanned when they reported for work. But the time clock system that we put in place does have an annual maintenance fee. But I believe only the first year should have been put to ARPA funds, so I'll take a look if if there's another year on there.
No, it was it was just one year, but I was wondering if that was going to be a yearly thing?
No, there is a, there is a recurring fee, but that won't come out of ARPA. Just that first initial purchase to get those temperature scanning time clocks is what was approved by council.
And I will, I'll tell you something. We had been using paper time sheets for years. And then some, some of us used Excel. But one of the things that we had problems with is you don't know on a piece of paper for sure if that's right. And so this, you actually go up and you digitally put your finger in there, and then it takes a photo of your face to make sure you're really you. So it's to, it was a request by council, because we had had issues with time sheets.
Okay. And one more thing. If I remember right, do we have a million dollars in bonds for savings?
We actually have ten million, right, Jameson?
We have, we we purchased bonds in, at the end of twenty twenty-one, I believe, or twenty twenty-two, maybe, to put that big amount of savings that we had just sitting in our savings account. The initial purchase was ten million, I believe, because we knew some of this was going to be ARPA spending. So I believe we have about eight million left, which is just part of what the general, like the beginning fund balance, instead of it being all cash, and this is not all ARPA money, just instead of it being all cash, it will sit in a bond, so it can gain interest.
Okay, and I will note that Ms. Horner paid her salary for how many years?
A couple.
With just the interest alone. So it was a great, great way for us to put some money, money in the bank.
Thanks.
That all? All right. Well, thank you. Ms. Frausto?
Yeah, I just have a couple of announcements and one follow-up question. I'll start with the follow-up question. So I know we talked about translation services, and it's just something that I've been wanting to follow up with you on. I don't know if we have any updates at this point, but I know that I've been wanting to reach out, so we can collaboratively, hopefully, work together to make sure that we bring this over to council as soon as as possible. So it was kind of an announcement update, follow-up question. If there's any, I will maybe let you take the floor. If not, then maybe we can follow up. So, you know.
Madam City Manager.
We have, Jackie and I have discussed it. We've looked at some different solutions. There is a ton of solutions out there. So really, I think, probably in Public Safety Subcommittee. probably in public safety subcommittee, maybe we could do some of that work. Um, or one of the other sub-subcommittees, but I do think it's something that the subcommittees need to work on. And look at the different options. One of the things that I think is really important is that we have a certified translator.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's going to be one, one area that there's a big cost involved that we'll have to work out. So had part of this is budget, part of this is equipment, and part of this is hiring somebody. So it's kind of a three-legged stool.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, so we'll just do some more follow-up on the side. Um, and um, another announcement, I I really just wanted to acknowledge a couple of guests in in the room. Um, I um talked about the internship opportunity that I have for a high school student still in the works. Applications have not been closed. So if you know the high school, either uh senior, junior, um, encourage them to apply. Um, I really want our youth to begin participating in civic engagement and community engagement and community collaboration. Um, so we have uh Saraya um Wise and Laura Gonzalez, and they are both applicants. And I reached out to them and I said, hey, it's a really great opportunity. Come on, we're having a next council meeting at six thirty. And come and enjoy um the show and really just see how we all work in action and in communication together. So I'm really glad that the youth is is engaging and and thank you so much for being here. Um, I hope you've learned something today and you get to take one thing a-a-way uh from tonight with you. Um, so huge shout out to the youth because they are really coming up. They're showing out. And really, they are going to be the ones to move mountains and make these changes in our communities and across the country. Um, in this upcoming election this year, um presidential election. Um, so shout out to Generation Z. Um, and yeah, that's, oh, and then just another thing um that that I really wanted, that I wanted to announce as well. Um, we all know that our neighboring uh city, uh Mapten, has been uh battling some water quality issues. Um, and uh a couple of us, another uh uh a friend of mine, Sandra Sati, in in the room. Um, we were actually able to do some water distribution with them uh over over the weekend in this weather. Um, so I mean, it's all for a good cause, but I just don't want to highlight my work or my volunteer work, but rather highlight um the work of communities coming together and working for a common good. Um, so uh shout out to Mapten, um, city council members and um also the organization, We Are AIA, who really hurt, well, worked to bring water forward to the Mapten resident residents in this time of need. Um, so shout out to their leadership as well. And I hope we continue seeing more of this collaboration moving forward because when one city succeeds in the lower valley, the rest of the six, of the cities will definitely succeed. Um, so that was it for me and my announcements and
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about, you know, the meeting. Thank you, City Manager for meeting today. And I know we discussed the ARPA fund and and putting this separately. Um, that's not in the general fund. It can, what can we do there? And then, you know, the timeline uh to do that. It's just so, so we can know a little bit better, be a little bit more aware of of the actual funds that that we have either on ARPA or the general funds. Um, and also, I don't know if you were able to find that, um, Munson's.
No, I haven't found it, but I will get to it, get to that. I was going to ask Jackie to look for it, but I haven't. It's the appraisal for the Munson property.
I I have that if you want to.
You.
Okay, and then, and just, you know, I know the um Ms. Warner said something about amending the 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 purchasing and procurement agreement. Um, is this something that we're going to have in in city council approved or or in a workshop?
City Council approved um at the beginning of this year, the update or the new purchasing and procurement policy. Um, that still does need updates and those laws regarding public bidding do change um on a fairly regular basis. Sort of like the personnel policy. So anytime changes are made for that, that will come before council. Um, there haven't been any changes since we passed it. I believe it was in February of twenty twenty-three.
All right. I'm I'm just concerned, you know, over the, over the spending of, of, you know, of funds. Um, it's just, there's a lot of, a lot of purchases, I believe, that um could have waited or couldn't happen at all, but uh you know, we'll, we'll go forward and then and see what happens there. Maybe we could have a different conversation. At your office. Thank you.
Ms. Hart.
You know, I'm trying to remember what I've done this past, since our last meeting. And uh, one week was just housebound because of license, you know. So I don't really have anything to report. I know I did something wonderful, but I can't remember what it was.
Well, we will eagerly anticipate.
I'll give you that update when I figure out what it was.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hart. All right, I've got a number of things. Uh, first of all, I do want to thank Ms. Dolan for bringing up an extremely important point. This is something that's real easy for us to overlook, myself included. And so I need to go back and check my own records of when I last took the OPMA training. I know I've been through a course recently, but I don't think it has been recorded in any way, shape or form. And I think the only one that's been recorded is uh when she mentioned somebody who took one in two thousand thirteen, that was probably me. So I know I have been reading up on it, but I do need to take the certified course. And if you find yourself in that, in fact, I don't know if the manager or the clerk can go back and look at it and remind each of us where we are and what we need to do. And maybe send us the link so we can just get on and do it. That'd probably be a good thing. We do want to stay in compliance. So thank you for bringing that up. That was, that was valuable to be reminded of that. Um, secondly, um, Public Safety Committee is myself, Mr. Beeler and the Deputy Mayor. And if we're going to talk about translating, we need to set up a time to meet. And that would have to be in agreement with both uh police chief and fire chief. And so if we could set up a time to meet, in the past, we would meet at five thirty before a regular city council meeting or a workshop meeting. And so think about that when that would work, and I would love to be able to get together and meet on that and discuss some of the options available. And we can obviously give you guys some time to discuss amongst yourselves, along with the manager, what the requirements and options are as far as uh translating services and how we could best go about that. I do want to compliment the manager and the clerk as far as getting Facebook and our internet page uh translated immediately. Um, that turned out, I understand, to be a lot easier than we thought it was going to be because they found a way to just have it do it by itself. And so thank you. That, I find it ironic that the Spanish one comes up on my feed before the English one. But uh you know, I read them both. Um, secondly, um, the Rules Committee meeting, I would like to meet before our next uh regular meeting. And Rules Committee is myself, Deputy Mayor and Ms. Hart. And we can either meet right before a a meeting or we can pick another time to do that. And that is to uh discuss uh Ms. Fausto's presentation. Um, in our last meeting, we're concerned about having citizens be able to make comments before each vote. And I would like for us to look over the rules that we have on that and be able to make a discussion on that, make some recommendations at our workshop.
Thank you.
All right. Then.
Do you want to set it now or you want to?
We can meet, we'll talk about it after this. Yeah. All right, then I do want to thank our city staff and city employees. You guys really stepped up with the shelter during the extremely cold weather. I understand uh we had up to twenty-five people at night, anywhere from ten to twenty-five people. Um, absolutely brilliantly done. We had volunteers, uh Reyes Escobar and some of his folks came and helped out one night, but it was staff. All right, it was a long weekend. It was uh Martin Luther King Weekend. And these guys stepped up and put in some ridiculously long shifts to help out. Uh, we had donors from the city, um Walmart and others, uh Domino's Pizza. I was walking in to drop some stuff off and they showed up with fifteen pizzas. Uh, that kind of stuff, our community really stepped up to help, but our staff are the ones who put the hours in. And I just want to commend them. I am proud of them. And it was something that was extremely needed in our community at that absolutely ridiculously cold temperatures. Um, I think somebody was telling me, maybe it was Jackie, that somebody who sleeps in his car had signs of frostbite on his fingertips. You can imagine somebody in a car that could turn the engine on and get the heater going. Imagine those who uh don't have a car. And so uh to be able to provide this service was was good. Last thing I want to see is people dying on our streets from cold and exposure. So thank you to our staff for doing
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A quick question on that. I also want to commend everybody who was there. I actually went a couple of the days over the weekend and it just was amazing to see community come together. Just a quick question on on staff. Was there, was our staff compensated for being there over the weekend?
City Manager, you can answer that question better than I can.
We are required to compensate them um through their union contracts. So yes, they were. And actually, Mr. Escobar was compensated as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and that's, that's all I have. Um, next item is upcoming council meetings.
Okay, for the February fifth workshop, we have the stormwater rate analysis, discussion, water system plan, and the item for the agenda process review you will be discussing at the Rules Committee. So do you want me to remove that for now?
No, we're still want to discuss that on the, at the workshop, but Rules Committee wants to be able to make recommendations and 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 basically have a better knowledge of what our rules say about that.
Okay, then for now, that's all we have.
All right, council members, as you look at what is on the screen, or if you look at the upcoming agenda, you will see items printed or a date printed in red. By that date, you need to get those agenda items submitted. I don't know if you can put that back up, Jackie, so that we can look at those dates a minute. All right, so for our February five workshop, that is due on the thirty-first of January for our February twelve regular meeting. It is due on the seventh of February and for the twenty-sixth regular meeting, it is due on the twenty-first of February. So keep those dates in mind to get those items on the agenda. And you can send that into City Manager or or myself, but I recommend the City Manager for that. Ms. Ripley.
I did really enjoy getting my packet on Thursday last week.
And and I'm glad that that we were able to meet and and make sure of that. And it really worked out nice considering that City Hall ended up being closed on Friday, so it may not have happened on time if it hadn't been the case. So yeah, kudos to you guys for getting that all together. I know it's a, it's a big project every other week. All right, items from department heads. Madam City Manager.
And I'm going to refer to staff and we'll start with HR.
Uh, we, our HR and finance, we don't have anything to report at this time.
Good evening. Um, some stats from the Police Department. So from the eighth of this month, up till current, three hundred and twenty-eight incidents, ninety-one traffic stops, twenty-four arrests. Ten were criminal non-traffic arrests and eleven were criminal traffic arrests. Uh, thirty-nine traffic infractions issued. Uh, Mr. Martin, when he uh spoke about YV cog, talked about the crime lab. If anybody's interested in doing a tour of that, get ahold of me. I can get that set up and and uh take you over there. Um, over the last month, the Police Department has a twenty-seven percent increase in uh social media engagement. So I thought that was important to note. That's pretty significant. And then a big project I've been working on is a police foundation, which is a nonprofit that can uh help the police um connect with the youth more and can also um uh, there's a lot of different things. It's a nonprofit that can accept money and there are things that city funds can't be used for that the Police Foundation can use. So if uh an officer goes to a house at three in the morning and uh family's out of food and they want to go to the store and and spend a hundred dollars, we can use foundation funds for that. And uh so that is up and running. We just got our UBI number last week, so that's moving forward. Any questions?
Exciting. Sounds exciting.
Will it be a five oh one C three?
Correct, yes.
Perfect.
Hmm.
Cool.
Thank you. So uh, yes, I have a couple of things to go over. The, I'll start with the Sixth Street um concerns that we had earlier. I'd like to comment on those. Though, Sixth Street has been going on for a year now. It actually started last January in twenty-three. And parts of the project went um faster than when we even planned on. But there are certain sections of it that unfortunately have been disappointing due to different organizations that are part of that. One was the railroad. Um, I don't know if you recall, but the project got done, sections of the railroad, we ended up being held up for a few months until the railroad gave us the permits to work in that area. And so now back to the street lights, same thing there. We um, the contractors came in, put up the lights. Um, but there's been, one, we have to work with PPNL's schedule when they come out and do the pedestal inspections. So there's a couple uh light uh pedestals there. And um, they have failed two inspections. There's been some miscommunication between the contractor, the electrical contractor and and PPNL that they're working through. Um, unfortunately, we end up sitting there waiting for them and um I'm just as disappointed as the citizens are because I want those lights to be on already. Um, with the Christmas lights, the way they put those on too, when they informed us about that, of course, we told them that we weren't going to approve that. So yes, they're going to come back and fix that. Um, why they put them on the way they did, um, I don't know. Um, but that is part of the, the, the work that they're going to fix. Um, last week I had a meeting with the uh engineer and the general contractor. And so we're working through that. There's also one street light that is in front of um one of the businesses on the north side of the railroad. Um, that still hasn't been up there either because it falls within a zone of PPNL's cables and the height of the pole. So therefore, the, the, the contractor can't put it up because PPNL has to put it up because it's within a ten-foot space. So that has been held up until PPNL can get somebody out there to set that pole. And so um that's the update that I have on on Sixth Street. The other thing I wanted to update on was just also how um the amount of hours that the crew has been working on removing snow. Um, since uh Thursday, uh they started it at four AM and they worked throughout the day. Friday morning, they came in at one PM after the snow stopped, started plowing snow, worked fourteen hours straight. And uh, so just from Thursday of last week till today, we um lay down two hundred to two hundred and twenty tons of sand um just to keep the, the areas um as safe as possible. Um, other things to consider too, that sometimes we miss is that we also maintain is the airport. Um, so a lot of time has to be spent out there to keep that runway, the taxiway um clear and safe. So um, today they they went out and and lay down some de-icer to hopefully help with, with uh what may come next. Um, so yeah, that's what I had and you have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Sancho, Mr. Beeler.
Uh, Sixth Street and YB or Yakima Valley. Um, they got done doing the cement pour and all that, and it looks great. And I drove by, what was it, last week? And then somebody else is in there digging it up and running underground cable. Are they going through our streets or are they fixing what?
So that's another project that's been going out throughout the whole uh city, which is that zip lease. Uh, they pulled a bunch of permits, yes. And so that what they're doing is they're boring. And so what they did, they're, they're doing a lot of work on the north side, but they ran some stubs bored underneath. And yes, they're going to come back and repair that. Um, but that's what that work is. It's not part of the Sixth Street project. It's, it's a different project. That's all I have.
Okay, further questions?
Um, I just wanted to to make a comment. Uh, thank you to you and your staff for doing the work. I know it's uh some wild weather that we are enduring or we've been enduring and I I myself um am not a great driver in snow. Um, and my mom can attest to that. Um, sometimes I have her driving me around, so I admit to that. Um, right? It's not easy. One time I slid off and I think I just took some of that trauma. Uh, but the roads, um, thank you for all the work that you've been doing and thank your staff and I would commend their efforts and um, so just wanted to to make sure that um that recognition was given tonight.
You're welcome.
I do have a question. Um, regarding uh snow removal. Over at the senior center, there is a huge pile of leaves now covered with snow.
Hmm.
And I was wondering if the, when you're doing snow removal, if you might want to pick those leaves up. It takes up, I think it's one or it's either two or three parking spots at the, in the, the parking lot. I I I've been there a little while. But um, I just noticed it today when I was driving through the puddle, it's in the different story. Yeah.
Take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
And please tell your crew that council says thank you for all the hard work and the long hours.
I'll let him know.
Okay.
Great, okay. Um, so I just have a little, a few things here for you. Um, just pulling up our quick analytics here. Um, so permits issued this year, um it's only January twenty-second, but we've issued twenty-five certainly January twenty-second, but we've issued twenty-five permits. Um, done forty-seven inspections, and that's that's between the two departments, twenty-five permits, forty-seven inspections and um about twenty thousand dollars in revenue that's been been collected so far this year. Um, pre at our previous meeting, I know we talked a little bit about a um small business resource event that's coming up um in February. So I just wanted to give you everybody an update. We've made all of our flyers in English and Spanish, and um we're going to be handing those out pretty soon. Um, probably uh this week. Um, it's uh given the time, we we went back and forth some with some ti- different times and the the members of the Community Economic Development Commission really want to be present for this meeting. Um, so they they went back and forth on several different times and they finally settled on um February twenty-fifth, and they want to do an afternoon meeting and an evening evening meeting. I know that we initially had had a schedule for two days, but we thought that if we did two separate sections during one day, that that would kind of make up for that difference. So there will be translation services at at both of those as well. And um um some snacks and refreshments will also be provided for this. So we want to, we really want to talk about what it would take to get a business started, what it means to go create your DOR account, um, business insurance, site selection, all that, all that good stuff. And then any city sort of city resources that are available, OIC resources that are available and uh really kind of inform the community, so. Yep.
Just a quick question. Um, the where where the uh Resource Center uh again?
Oh, it's it's gonna be at the Community Center. Yes, sorry about that. Yep.
Kudos to you guys on that, um, being able to help citizens with those types of things. It's not something typically that a city does. And yet we're able to do that, and I just think that's great, just helping people to maybe realize a dream. So I think that's phenomenal. So thank you on that work.
And please let me know when the flyers are ready. I'm more than willing to walk around downtown and take them to all the business owners.
I'll print out a bunch for you tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you.
Let them with me and I'll take.
I typically don't have a report, but if anyone has any questions at this.
Questions for Mr. Riley?
Yes, no, maybe?
Well, just thank you for continuing to review and I'm grateful to have you here at our meetings.
Thank you.
So first start by saying the fire department as a whole is very glad to see the temperatures rising. Uh, this last week was uh presented us with what we'd like to consider abnormal call volume. Um, so just kind of give you some statistics. So a year to date, we've ran two hundred and twenty-three emergency calls for service. Um, a hundred and sixty-seven of those were just in the last two weeks. Um, of that, we responded to nine working fires. So I understand that a working fire is is one that we, you know, we put water on the fire. It's not as if it was out on our arrival or an investigation or inspection. Um, seven of which were structure fires. One was a garbage fire and one additional was a cooking fire. Um, in addition, with the cold weather, we did respond to nineteen automatic alarms caused by um well, ultimately cold temperatures, but typically resulting in frozen pipes and sprinkler systems and other issues that arose from that. So our our crews have been uh been very busy with that. So um, also a little bit of good news is on Friday this last week, we um uh new new fire engine arrived. So it's uh Cascade Fire in Yakima getting all the outfit and the uh equipment added to it. So we were there today doing our PDI, which is our post-delivery inspection. So we are very excited. It's beautiful and it's gonna be a great asset to our community and we hope to have it in service at the station, hopefully within about a month, month and a half, depending on labor for getting it everything outfitted, so.
I'll see if any questions.
Can I make a comment on the fire engine really quick? I apologize. I meant to say this earlier. Um, because of the way we got this, when we got this truck sooner than the Treasurer's Office was able to give us that money. Remember, we passed um that resolution last time. So we will be bringing that as part of the budget amendment um that is going to come up for the first quarter. And so the current budget does not list that as an expenditure, because originally it was supposed to be paid directly by by the Treasury. And so we're working in the Finance Department on getting those added. Um, but some of the budget numbers will change for them.
Thank you for that heads up.
My turn, okay. Um, you received an OPMA reminder in December. I'll send it again. Um, AWC does offer those trainings and so does MRSC. If you have any certificates that you have on file that maybe I don't, you can send them to me. Um, and then when you meet for a Rules Subcommittee, if you can discuss the Boards and Commissions, the members that are on there that have met their term and date. Also, again, on the Warming Center, um that thank you to all of the community members who donated and who were willing to just quickly provide items that were needed. Um, the Public Works guys were going back and forth from the Water Service repairs to going back to making sandwiches at the at the Community Center. Lisa um was at the commu- at the Warming Center, making sure meals were ready. Um, things were planned out there and she got to know a lot of them and make connections with them. So that's amazing. Um, and then, oh, some, there were some food items that were left over and they are available to we see anybody around the Community Center there, they can stop by and get a cup of noodles or something that was left. Lisa said she was willing to prepare things like small things like that that were left over for them. Also, uh Jamie sent me the payroll with the date with the names, I'm sorry. Um, so it's here. And I will update the agenda packet to show this.
Okay, so now for my update. Um, as you're aware, a week and a half ago, my daughter was in a catastrophic fire at her apartment in Pasco. And um she basically was standing outside in a pair of pajamas. And I teased her and said she could go to the Warming Center since she was homeless. But it was uh made me want to remind people that stuff is stuff. You can't replace your daughter or your son-in-law. Um, they're they're staying with me right now. They're okay. They were hospitalized. Um, but they lost everything. No ID, no money, no no debit card. Um, they got some help from the American Red Cross, and if I wouldn't have had a photo of their IDs for the insurance, they wouldn't have been able to get help. So I encourage you to take a photo of your ID, keep it on your phone, keep your purse by the door. Know know where your stuff is and know where your animals are. They lost all four of their animals in the fire. And it's, I've been really sad this last couple of weeks and I haven't really been myself. And I just wanted you guys to know that it really hit me hard to think that I could lose my daughter and my son-in-law. And they did, they just they were lucky. And so now they're trying to rebuild their lives. Um, they don't have an apartment. They had to go apply for apartments. And, you know, in the tri-cities, it's expensive and it's hard to find a place to live. Um, but I just wanted you guys to know that I'm kind of not myself lately. And that's why, because it just was a big tragedy in our household. And I think everybody who's has helped her, she's had her friends be amazing. Um, but there's things that you don't even think about, like the key fob to the Jeep. It burned up and was a big mess. They couldn't even drive their Jeep. And uh, those are four hundred dollars. And you don't think about little things like that until it happens in in your family. So I just wanted to share, you know, kind of my story with everybody. And if you're listening to this, thank those first responders. Because they were amazing. And I had to say, it was pretty cool, not in a great, great way, but one of our former Sunnyside firefighters that works for the ambulance service in Pasco was one of her ta- one that took care of her. So when I got there, I gave him a big hug and said, thank you so much. Um, but it's 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 eye-opening, eye-opening for me and my family. Um, because you know, you don't know you have it until it's gone, right? So get those fire safes. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Um, and you know, if anybody needs anything, you know where I'm at, just send me an email. Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Madam City Manager, and please know that you've definitely been in our prayers. Um, so that's items from Department Heads. I do have one more thing to ask. Mr. Deputy Mayor, you had a question about repealed ordinances, and I'm wondering if you want to get that on the agenda for our next regular meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you know we could make sure we have, we're transparent on the website and it's easier to.
Okay, so if we can make sure that's on the agenda for our next regular meeting in February, then we can discuss what we're gonna do and how we're gonna link and and show repealed ordinances and where we find because some, yeah, we need to be real clear on that. Um, I have had people last year, last fall, were saying, you know, I find that it's repealed, but now I don't know where where it's gone. So yeah, if we can find some strategy for that and discuss that, that would probably be a really good idea. And I did not want to close the meeting without making sure that I'd asked you about that. So sorry I took so long to uh to get to that. It almost went right past me, but. All right, there being no further business to come before council this evening, and without objection, I adjourn this meeting.